Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Trustee Lawrence.
Here.
Trustee Lawler.
Hi.
Trustee Leafblad.
Here.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Mayor Dodge.
Here.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, we are going to have Orland Park Troop 318 Life Scout Jimmy Sullivan come up.
A very special guest, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Would all able please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, do you want to, can you come back up? No, 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 just because I think we're talking about this later, correct?
Okay. Yeah.
All right, just wanted to make sure everybody knows that we're going to address what you were doing, which we all appreciate, so.
Thank you.
Approval of the September 15, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting of September 15, 2025.
Second.
So motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Approval of the September 20 sec, excuse me, I just had my brain dismounting, sorry. Approval of the September 22nd, 25 special meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' special meeting of September 22nd, 2025.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler, or excuse me, Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Introduction of new participants in the Village's internship program.
Regina, George, did you mention they have to give a five-minute impromptu speech?
No.
Whatever the topic is.
So, good evening, Mayor, Village Board. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to four ambitious individuals who applied for and were accepted to the Village of Orland Park internship program. I will tell you that three of them are here this evening. One unfortunately could not make it tonight, but none of them want to speak to you. So, I did tell them that I would do them a favor and just give you a little background on them if each of them could stand as I was speaking about their introduction. First, I would like to introduce the gentleman who could not join us this evening unfortunately, but we all know him, and that is David Karpensky. He began an internship with the mayor's office on August 11th of this year, and he's pursuing a master's degree in public policy at UIC. So, we asked David a couple of questions, and he said that he chose to intern with the village because he loves, loves, loves Orland Park. He has lived in the Orland Park community his entire life and wants to give back while also learning about local government. He commented that he has already learned a lot and is thankful that he has the chance to work with professional staff in the mayor's office. We did ask him a fun fact about himself, and he said that he learned to play the piano when he was five and continued to play ever since. So, if David is watching, we are looking forward to continue work with you, and thank you for chatting with us about your interests. Now, the next two individuals I want to introduce to you are both interning in the same department, IT. They were both so extraordinary that a decision could not be made about one, so TAD was able to secure two. The first intern I would like to introduce is Lean Adele Corim. Thank you, Lean. Lean began an internship with the department on September 8th this year, and she is pursuing a master's degree in AI at the Illinois Institute of Technology. Lean chose to intern with the village because she wants the opportunity to gain hands-on experience in a professional setting while contributing to the community that has always been welcoming to her since she moved here. The Village of Orland Park seemed like a great place to learn, grow, and apply her skills in a meaningful way, and her fun fact is that she is currently pursuing her master's in artificial intelligence. And outside of academics, she loves photography. It is a hobby that allows her to express creativity and sharpen her attention to detail. Lean, thank you for joining us tonight, and we welcome you to the village. Now, her collar part in IT is Martin Potratus. Martin, can you please stand? Now, Martin has this unique situation because he is homegrown. He was actually an employee of the Sportsplex as an attendant since 2023. He's in pursuit of his bachelor's in computer engineering at UIC and was selected as the second intern with IT and began his new journey on September 8th as well, along with Lean. Martin says that he chose to intern with the Village of Orland Park because of his love of and continuous involvement within the community. Some examples of him making a difference include volunteering at the Orland Park Food Pantry throughout high school, in addition to playing basketball for Carl Sandberg all four years. He is grateful for the opportunities that the village has provided over the years and looks forward to learning as much as possible from not only IT, but all surrounding staff. Now, Martin's fun fact was quite interesting to me because he, and I hope he's still standing. Stand up for this one, Martin. So, he actually participates in Lithuanian folk dancing and is part of a group located in LaMonte that travels to perform at international festivals. I asked him, he didn't, he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to show us today. But we do welcome you to the village, Martin, and good luck in your IT internship. We look forward to working with you throughout the year. Okay, last but not least, we have Mr. Dorn Martel from Development Services. If you could please stand for me, Dorn. Thank you. So, he began his internship with the department on July 28th, so he's an oldie but a goodie now. He was here before everybody else, and he's pursuing his master's degree in urban planning and policy at UIC. Dorn chose to be an intern with the village because of its large, well-organized development services department. He also appreciates how much focus there is on going businesses and encouraging commercial development within the community. His fun fact is that he is originally from Miami, Florida, and came to Chicago about two years ago to attend graduate school at U of C. Dorn, we welcome you as well and look forward to working with you. Thank you to all three of you for making yourselves available to come.[509.31][509.31][applause]
Thanks, Regina. And welcome and thank you. I think we've met with a couple of you, so very nice to have you here. Next item, please.
Advisory Board Appointments.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Leafblad.
I move to consent the appointments by President Dodge as fully referenced below. So, there aren't that many names, so I'm going to go ahead and read them. Senior Citizen Advisory Board Nancy Sorich, Gilda Nelson, Deanne Bilinski, Margaret Carroll, Mariola Ward, Luanne Kazniewski, Virginia Strasser, and Maura Weaver. AI and Information Technology Advisory Board Mike Yak.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Are there any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment? Accounts payable September 16, 2025 through October 6, 2025 approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawrence.
I'd like to make a statement before we have a motion on this.
Please do.
A recent complaint suggested that my prior employment with Commonwealth Edison should prevent me from voting on ComEd matters. I want to state clearly, as I have before, that I retired from ComEd after a long career as an engineer. My pension benefits are fully vested, fixed, and are not affected in any way by actions of the village board. For that reason, I have no conflict of interest in voting on the items to approve the accounts payable, which includes line items for ComEd.
Thank you, Trustee Lawrence. Is there a motion or a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to approve the accounts payable September 16, 2025 through October 6, 2025 in the amount of $7,727,705.64.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Consent agenda: A, payroll for September 12, 2025 approval; B, payroll for September 26, 2025 approval; C, elevated tank number one additional design, engineering, and oversight fees; D, 2025 fall tree removal project; E, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the contract and bylaws document of the Internet Governmental Personal Benefit Cooperative and authorizing membership in the IPBC by the Village of Orland Park; F, intergovernmental agreement between School District 230 and the Village of Orland Park for the services of an Orland Park Police Department School Resource Officer at Carl Sandberg High School Recommended Updated Agreement; G, Estates at Ravinia Meadow Subdivision; H, Centennial Park Aquatic Center Utility Relocation Project; I, A&amp;E Services for Village Center Fire Main Improvement Project; J, Special Event Permit for AL's Auto Show at Oprah Modern Greek Cuisine, 100 people; K, Special Event Permit for Chick-fil-A's Fall Festival, 100 to 200 people; L, Amendment to Special Use Residential Plan Development Estates at Ravinia Meadow; M, RFP Number 25-035 Sportsplex Custodial Cleaning and Janitorial Services; N, Miditech Assure Hire Background Check/Social Media Search/Criminal and MVR Monitoring Services.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve items A through N of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Land Development Code Amendment, Special Uses for Restaurants Within 300 Feet of Costco Wholesale Zoning Map Amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Regarding case number 2025-0619, I move to approve the plan commissioned recommended action for this case, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending the Land Development Code of the Village of Orland Park as amended relative to restaurants within 300 feet of residential use."
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Land Development Code Amendment, Allow Outdoor Fireplaces in All Zoning Districts.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Leafblad.
Regarding case number 2025-0746, I move to approve the plan recommended action as presented for this case, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section 6-302 of the Land Development Code of the Village of Orland Park as amended relative to outdoor fireplaces."
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Old German Methodist Cemetery Eagle Scout Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee, I think that was simultaneous, trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve Jimmy Sullivan's Old German Cemetery Eagle Scout Project as proposed and to waive any permit fees.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. So, oops, let me get on my own. You want to come up and tell us a little bit about the project?
Hello, my name is Jimmy Sullivan. I am a life scout in Orland Park Scouts VSA Troop 318, and I am a junior at Carl Sandberg High School, and I have lived in Orland Park for my entire life. That's volume. There we go. I'm going too fast. Okay, there we go. Thank you. I'm here this evening to discuss my Eagle Scout project, which is the restoration of the Old German Methodist Cemetery, which is located at Harlem and Wheeler Drive near the Orland Park Water Tower. It's kitty-corner from Baracko's. Cemetery was active from 1861 through 1917. In the early 1970s, when Harlem Avenue was moved and rerouted, a community group, which included a group of scouts, came together to restore the cemetery and install the perimeter fence. As best as we can tell, it has been 50 years since the cemetery has had a significant restoration effort or any work done in the cemetery aside from cutting the grass. Cemetery is estimated to have, there we go. Cemetery is estimated to have over 100 graves, but only a handful of monuments remain. It's the burial ground of some of the earliest residents of Orland Park, including Charles Burkhart. Charles Burkhart was the second mayor of Orland Park after John Humphrey died in 1914, after he became ill on a trip to England. So, after John Humphrey died, Charles took over as the mayor, and he served as interim mayor from October 1914 to April 1915. And then Harry Cox was elected after Carl Burkhart. So, in the bottom right corner of this slide, you can see Carl Arthur Burkhart's headstone, and he's buried with his wife Louisa. Louisa was, as far as I'm aware, the last person buried at the cemetery in 1917. And that's the best headstone in terms of condition. The rest of them are old. So, I sent out over 100 letters about my project to celebrities and politicians. So, my first response rose, a signed postcard from Adam Sandler. My project's also been featured in a handful of news media organizations such as the Daily Southtown, Fox 32, WGN-TV, and even the Village of Orland Park's own Facebook page. My project has received donations from over 100 individuals and organizations, including the Orland Park Lions Club, the Oak Forest Freemason Lodge, Mayor Jim Dodge, and each of the current Village of Orland Park trustees. So, thank you all for your support. So, my original goal for the cemetery was to restore one or two monuments. However, as of yesterday, thanks to all of the funding I have received, I was able to restore virtually all of the monuments that restoration was possible. So, this slide shows the state of the cemetery in 2022 when I first started planning my project. Almost all of the monuments had damage. They were toppled over or missing. The landscape was overgrown, and there was extensive poison ivy surrounding the cemetery. So, in the second to the right, the top right, that's Carl Arthur Burkhart's headstone. He was the second mayor. There's a handful of other stones, as you can see in this picture. So, that's the before picture, and here's the after with the headstones and the overgrowth.
Wow.
So, all of the monuments that are possible have been restored so far. There's maybe one or more, two, that need a little bit more work. So, as you can see, we've removed a significant amount of brush, and we've also done a good job restoring the monuments. The, I lost my notes, sorry.
Just wing it.
The, so, the row of monuments closest to Harlem Avenue is what's pictured in the top-left picture. The one all the way on the left-hand side is the stone of Justice Weber, who owned the land before it became a cemetery. His monument was standing in 2019, and it was toppled in 2022 and became the symbol of my project. It was the first monument we restored. And in order to restore the monuments, I had to take an eight-hour workshop class hosted by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and then I had to get approved by the Department of Natural Resources to be able to work and clean on historical headstones, and then get a permit from the Department of Natural Resources. So, this slide just shows significant portions of overgrowth that I've removed. All the areas highlighted in blue have contained overgrowth that I have had removed from the cemetery, and that included poison ivy vines that were an inch thick. So, that was a big project. So, it's a little hard to see from this far, but you can kind of tell on the left-hand side the difference between the overgrowth. There was also a big cluster in the middle of the cemetery where a lot of the headstones currently sit that removed and actually uncovered a headstone that I did not know was there, as well as a few additional bases that I did not know were there. This headstone that's toppled on the left-hand side was Justice Weber, who I mentioned owned the cemetery and land. And you can see the difference between 2022 and 2025. So, throughout the process of my projects, I started by talking with the Colonial Chapel Funeral Home. Mr. Damstra, he owns the funeral home. That's the property immediately to the west of the cemetery, and they think that my project is great. They've donated money to me. They've been approved of the project the whole time, which has been very helpful. I also discussed it with Mr. Van Assen, who was here, and he's also been very helpful with getting the debris removed from the cemetery. So, the motion mentions doing a title search to confirm ownership of the cemetery. So, when I started talking to people to determine the ownership of the cemetery, I got in touch with Brad Bettenhausen, who is the head of the Orland Tinley Park Cemetery Association, and they are the owners of the land there. The cemetery was, when it first founded, it was a part of a church, the Tinley Park Methodist United Church, that had a whole different sort of church that split off and then split back together. But at one time, they gave the land, the church, to the Tinley Orland Cemetery Association. So, that is the current owner. It's not owned by the village. So, my next steps to sort of wrap up my project so that I can get my Eagle Scout award are to install signage, fix the fence that was installed in the 70s and is currently in disrepair, and to install a gate, which is why I am here this evening. So, I have four signs, two of each type that you see here on this table. One of this large sign here will be on the chain link fence along Harlem Avenue, and one of them I propose to put along the fence so you can see the name of the cemetery from the Colonial Chapel Funeral Home parking lot. That will make the cemetery easily accessible. People will see it's there because I've talked to a lot of people who didn't even know that it existed, and it's just kind of hidden there on Harlem. I also have these metal signs. That's that smaller sign on the left of this table there. And that sign, it covers the Illinois Cemetery Protection Act. There's a sign similar to that that contains the act that's at the cemetery that I also believe was put in on the 70s, and it is almost illegible and also in disrepair, which is why I need to replace it. And I also have two of those. There's two gates to the cemetery. One, well, one I'm proposing to put in by the parking lot for the Colonial Chapel Funeral Home, which is at the top on this picture. That's the west side of the cemetery. And then the current existing gate to the cemetery, which is on the south side of the cemetery or the left side of this picture. So, the motion states that if property ownership is deemed to be a non-village entity, the signs will need to be dual-post signs. So, my signs, as you see here, which I have already ordered, are not dual-post signs. The existing notice sign is fence-mounted and beyond repair. There's no location within the cemetery where these signs could be post-mounted because they would not be visible from off the property. Inside the fence, they would not be visible from the road, and we would risk drilling into potential grave sites or burial places. In addition, there are over 100 graves in the cemetery, so like I said, we don't know where they are, and installing eight posts to install these signs would likely disturb graves. If these signs are required to be post-mounted, as is currently indicated, I will have to abandon my plan to add signage to the cemetery. I also plan on adding a new gate to the funeral home parking lot, and this is to make the cemetery more visible to the public. The existing fence is over 50 years old and is in extreme disrepair. In addition to installing the gate, which is on the cemetery parking lot side, I would like to repair some damaged posts. The motion states that the fence permit will be necessary to double-check the proposed plans and specifications prior to the purchase of gate materials and construction and to facilitate the scheduling of an inspection for proper installation. While I appreciate the waiver of permit fees, these fees are nominal. If the permit requires a survey of the property, that will be a significant cost that my project cannot bear. As requested by Developer Services, I have done a Freedom of Information Act request, and it's been determined that there are no existing surveys of the cemetery. As the existing fence was installed over 50 years ago, it is now failing. If I have to abandon my plans for the new gate and repairs, it will continue to decay, and that will jeopardize the condition of the cemetery if the fence falls on any headstones or just prevents, or allows, rather, access to the cemetery that we would not like. The last piece of my project. I went on the wrong way. There we go. Oh, I guess there was another slide there. There we go. The last part of my project is a new historical marker sign to be placed near the new entrance. This sign explains the historical significance of the cemetery and the people who are buried there. Thank you for your time this evening and to all the staff from the village who have assisted with the action item being presented tonight. I request that the village allow for the installation of the signs, as I planned, mounted to the existing chain link fence. Post-mounted signs are not practical for this application, and I would have to replace the signs that I have already purchased. I request that the village waive the requirement of a plat of survey as part of the fence permit application requirements. The cemetery was last active over 100 years ago. There is no value to the cemetery or my project in having a survey completed. To the east is Harlem Avenue. To the south is the Village of Orland Park Water Tower. And to the west is the Colonial Chapel Funeral Home, which was built 50 years ago, and they are in approval of my project. I ask that the village board approve my project as proposed, including the signage, fence repairs, and gate, and to waive any permit fees as well as the permit application requirement for a plat of survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing, just, I'm sure the board would like the comment as well, but thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
On a couple of different levels. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, yeah.
Any of the board has any comments? Could I have a question for staff in a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Can you turn it on? Does it work?
It's on. Am I?
No. It's got to be red.
It is red. It's red, but that's the wrong button. Oh. Oh, sorry. I.
You're depriving us, Julia.
I'm sorry. I can, well, now, yeah. That makes a difference. I know. Don't give me a manual. Oh, my goodness. But I just wanted to say thank you. Obviously, you spent a lot of time putting this together, and I think that the best part of, I think, and my perception, and you tell me if I'm wrong, was the amount of things you learned about how things are done and how to make things happen.
Yeah.
And it's pretty impressive that not only did you dig and find a way, but you are, you know, ready to ask for your way, that you're confident in your solution and your way forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
Jimmy, I don't know what you plan on doing in a couple of years after high school, but we do have a lot of committees that, you know, we're always looking for people to be on, and seeing that you are all about preservation and conservation and doing things, maybe you would like to consider being one of the youngest members on one of our committees. So, just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
This is a, this is a great accomplishment, and to, when you go through life. And to, when you go through life, you have to accomplish things. This country, we have guys, you know, certain people, the pioneers built this country. And it's just, they accomplished it. You accomplished this. And it wasn't done halfway. It was, I can't believe how complete you did with everything connected with this. So it's just remarkable. I'm glad I live in Orland Park with you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Jessica Katsinas.
First of all, I want to say you come from very good stock.
Thank you.
Both your grandparents, your aunts, I'm sure your mom, and of course, your father. And they've all done their fair of community service. And in many, many ways, we thank them. And the gal that's not here, your other sister.
I do too.
Yes, your auntie as well, correct. But I want to say, what a tribute to those people and the family members that are still around that you did to clean up that cemetery.
Yeah, yeah. So I actually, the Carl Burkhart, he was the second mayor. I was actually able to go through obituary, census, and ancestry records. And I actually got in contact with his great-great-great-grandson, who lives in Massachusetts. So there's a lot of, even my aunt, she had a former coworker who is related to Justice, Mary Jane Weber, the wife of the man who owned the farm that the cemetery is on. So these were the first people who ever sort of moved to that area. They all established farms in Oak Forest, Orland Park, and Tinley Park. And it's just really a part of history that I'd like to preserve. So yeah, thank you.
I give you a lot of credit for taking the initiative and doing it. And I'm sure other people, including your family members, helped you along the way. But great job.
Thank you.
And just when you're talking about that fence, very quickly, is that the fence on the west side that you're talking about?
Yeah, so the current fence covers all four sides of the property. It needs repairs on the west side. The west side is where I would like to add the new gate.
Okay. One thing I wanted to say, maybe you can ask Mr. Dampstra if he has a copy of his survey that may pick up that fence on that property that may be of help.
Yeah, I could try, but I honestly highly doubt that there's any survey of the land, seeing as.
I mean, just his, because his may show the fence on yours.
Yeah, well, I could see. I just, I'm not sure.
Just an option. Well, thank you. Very proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Maloney.
Not only am I amazed at the amount of work that you have done on your own, I mean, I notice you said this a lot. I did this and I did that. I mean, ripping out poison ivy that's an inch thick and ripping out trees.
I had a lot of help with that. It wasn't just me.
No, no, take the credit. But I mean, but the, you know, the amount of work that you've done for this, the fact that you went and learned how to remediate these monuments, I mean, that's amazing. And the fact that, you know, the amount of detail is tremendous. You put a lot of thought and effort in this. You've thought this through and taken it to completion, almost. We're working on that. But I think this is absolutely amazing. And I guess, what made you think, I want to do this?
So I, in order to receive your Eagle Scout rank, you need to complete an Eagle project. And that is one that should benefit the community. So when I was little, I used to be in the backseat of my dad's car, my mom's car, whoever's car. And we would be on our way to Meyer, and we'd be coming down Harlem Avenue. And I'd always see the, that little, like, few headstones that you could just barely see off of Harlem Avenue. And I always thought they were like cool, like archaeological remains or whatever. So I used, I asked my dad once, I was like, hey, what is that? It's like, I think it's a cemetery. I don't know. So we pulled over, I was probably about seven or eight, to check it out. And I thought it was pretty cool. And at that time, I didn't really know anything about the cemetery or Scouts. But when I was thinking, when it was time to decide what I wanted to do for my Eagle project, I kept thinking of things I had seen throughout my time living in Orland Park that I could improve to help the community. And I thought back to when I was seven, looking at all those headstones and remembering how they weren't really in the best of shape. And it just kind of clicked in my head that I could do something to change that.
That's awesome. Well, thank you for sharing and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
George, Steve, we're set when we cast this vote?
Yes, the motion is, the project is proposed.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Leafblad.
I move to approve Jimmy Sullivan's Old German Cemetery Eagle Scout.
I'm sorry, Joanna, I think we had a motion on the floor.
They've all been fighting over this one.
Oh, I know, we all want to say it again, sorry.
So we do have a motion in a second. I'm assuming there's no other questions or comments? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney. Mayor Dodge.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Resolution for land use moratorium.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution imposing a nine-month temporary moratorium on the acceptance and approval of certain business licenses, development and zoning applications in the Village of Orland Park, Illinois.
Second.
The motion, a second. Any comments or questions about the resolution? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
No.
Trustee Katsinas.
No.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
17101, 17151, and 17171 South Wolf Road Development Design Engineering Services Contract Award Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawrence.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of a professional services agreement between the Village of Orland Park and V3 Companies LTD of Woodridge, Illinois for 17101, 17151, and 17171 South Wolf Road Development Design Engineering Services for a total not to exceed amount of $119,980. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
So motion, a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
Just very quickly, we don't own all these properties, correct? I mean, do we own all these?
We own.
No, we own one?
We own two out of the three. And the third one is in process right now to close.
And a quick question for Kraschidis, is there any opportunity that we can get a grant for any of this type of work?
We are working on it. We definitely have applications in, and we're waiting for some response. However, the two properties that we have, they won't be qualified for that because we will own that by then. But we're working on grants for the construction of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Maloney.
I guess, you know, eventually, I know this needs to be done, right? You know, I mean, this is something that we need to do. But I guess, what's the rush to get this done now and have yet another budget amendment? I mean, I know it's $120,000. But I just don't see what the hurry is. Couldn't we put this in as the greater project and do it during the budget cycle and do it next year?
Yeah, so the cost will be included in a future budget amendment. That line, I mean, that's, yeah, it absolutely will be, by the time all of the paperwork gets done and we start the project, it'll be a '26 project. So it'll be part of the regular budget.
Okay, so there won't be a budget amendment. We're going to see sneak in here.
Yeah, by the time, by the time everything gets done, we're not going to be paying any real money this year.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Municipal Advisory Services Agreement.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to authorize the approval and execution of a vendor contract with PMA Securities LLC for municipal advisory services for three years through November 30, 2028, with the option to renew for three additional years. Oh, hold on.
There's some ands.
It just jumped. Upon mutual agreement between the Village of Orland Park and PMA, and authorize the village manager to execute all necessary contract documents subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to execute engagement letters for bond series that may be issued from time to time under this agreement.
Second.
So motion, a second. Any comments or questions? This is our current advisory firm, correct, George?
That's correct.
Okay, call a roll, please.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Consideration and action on an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $42 million General Obligation Bonds Series 2025 to finance various capital improvements in and for the village, providing for the levy of taxes to pay said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawrence.
I move to adopt ordinance 5840 entitled, An Ordinance Providing for the Issuance of Not to Exceed $42 Million General Obligation Bonds Series 2025 of the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of financing certain capital improvements, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient for the payment of the principal of an entrance on said bonds, and providing for the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Second.
There's a motion.
Can I make a comment? There was an ordinance number red in that motion. That should not be in there yet. That's probably, we don't put the ordinances numbers in there.
So it should just be, I move to adopt an ordinance.
An ordinance, yes.
And it will get the number later.
Mm-hmm.
So Kraschidis, correct your motion. Correction to the motion and to the second.
I second as amended.
Okay. Any comments or questions about this motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
If we could have a quick breakdown on what this $42 million is going to be used for. For people that are listening at home and in the audience, it's an awful lot of money, and how are we going to be using it?
And maybe we can, so this is, for the folks at home, we had an extensive discussion regarding the debt servicing for the village. So this $42 million was the debt that was supposed to have been bought in '24 and '25. So there, so it's two years of debt. And it was according to the five-year financial plan that was approved in 2023. So this debt is, was all planned since 2023. There was, it was not sold when it was supposed to be. And now we're just going through the process for projects that were approved in 2024 and 2025. During the debt presentation, the agenda included all of the, all the projects that are going to be used for this.
Is there any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
Is it possible to get a breakdown, though? I mean, $42 million is just a lot. And I don't know why we're, I mean, we've got budget hearings starting next week or whatever. Why? I mean, there's a big picture and a big plan. Here we're borrowing, you know, for various capital projects. I mean, everything else around here is so detailed. I mean, we have various capital projects providing for the levy of taxes to pay the bonds, too. So I mean, we don't take it lightly with that. And I, I just think that it would be nice if we had a, you know, personally, I think it's nice to have details, especially when we're going to borrow money and assess a tax to collect it. I just, you know, not only get the detail, but also I'd like to go through the budget process, too, to see that it all fits in. But we're only a month away. I don't know what, why we do it now.
So this was, this money was spent in '24 and '25. This was all part.
George, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you. I apologize for being rude. Will you repeat what you just said?
Yeah, so this was, this was money that was already spent. This was already planned and spent as the, as the finance director mentioned. This should have been, the debt should have been taken early, should have been taken late 2024. And there was, there was a, there was an effort, there was, the direction was given to postpone until after the election. So now we're at a point where we actually have to pursue the debt as part of spending that already had occurred in '24 and '25.
So we've saved maybe $2 million in interest?
I don't know.
George, aren't there also implications that if we don't do this now, which is backfilling money that was already spent, we lose some eligibility for tax-exempt status? Isn't that correct, Chris?
Correct.
Yep, that is, that's one of the challenges that we have. Because it wasn't done on time, there are rules, IRS rules, on when the debt reimbursement can occur. So we've been, Chris has been working with PMA, our financial advisors, to remedy all of that.
I actually do have the details to provide to the board eventually, too, if you like.
Yeah, I guess, you know, let's, so, George, let's make sure that in future village comments, we, everybody understands the sequence of the decisions, including delaying this bond issue, and why now we're issuing $42 million worth of debt, which is essentially a 50% increase because of prior decisions. So let's make sure that clarity and transparency is out there. If you need to do a special communication, I think you should.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Leafblad.
George, you referred to the long discussion we had. We had a, didn't we have a, we had a, that's the meeting we had, where it's like an hour-long meeting where, didn't, I can't.
PMA.
Yes, they did the presentation.
Correct.
Of every single, of the whole, the total breakdown.
Correct.
And all of it. And we all asked our questions.
Correct.
And this is how we learned that the bonds hadn't been issued. You know, the instruction was to wait until after the election to issue the bonds. And this is something that we, that has to be done.
Correct.
Like we can't just avoid it.
to issue the bonds, and this is something that we, that has to be done, like we can't just avoid it.
Correct, yeah, if it's not done, our proposed budget right now has a, you know, has a fund balance, this $40 million would devastate the budget. If we don't, these are, these are already expected revenues as part of the budget process.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments on this motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
So, if we didn't take this, the money that was projected for 2025 obviously has to be repaid somewhere, but that would mean we'd have to make cuts next year to the road programs, sidewalk programs, and a whole bunch of other programs, correct? In order to keep our fund balance, general fund at 40%?
Exactly, so, the, you know, our general fund budget itself is somewhere around $65 million, just to give you an idea of what that would, that would just be absolutely devastating.
Any other comments or questions? It's a necessary move, we really don't have a whole lot of choice, and I think to the spirit of Trustee Healy's comments, we're gonna be taking a very close look at this budget cycle about the projected eventual debt level if we don't make changes to some of the plans that were in existence going into early '25, it's really that simple. Call and roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Ordinance Amending Title I Administration, Chapter 16 Procurement, Sections 1-16-3, 1-16-7 and 1-16-8 Regarding Authorization and Method Procurement.
Mr. Mayor?
Did I have those chapters, were they wrong?
Yeah, so, thank you, we're trying to make sure we get the citations right, so thank you, Jessica, for staying.
So, it should be Sections 1-16-3, 1-16-17 and 1-16-18.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, Ordinance Amending Title I Administration, Chapter 16 Procurement, Sections 1-16-3, and as amended, 1-16-17 and 1-16-18 regarding authorization and methods for procurement. Second?
So, motion in a second, any comments or questions on the motion? Call and roll, please.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Kenneth Kovak versus Village of Orland Park at All Settlement Agreement and General Release.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I move to approve the settlement agreement and general release between the Village of Orland Park and Kenneth Kovak, and authorize the village manager to execute the settlement agreement and general release subject to village attorney review.
Second?
There's a motion in a second, any comments or questions on the board? George, do you want to give a 30-second synopsis?
This is, the parties involved in the Kovak versus Orland Park at All claim they've reached a settlement, and the terms of the settlement are specifically set forth in the settlement agreement, and then if, assuming it gets approved tonight, we will, it will put an end to this litigation.
Thank you, George, again, any comments or questions? And I'm personally glad that we're bringing some of these, this litigation to an end. Call and roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business.
I think we wore everybody out.
Board comments?
Trustee Healy?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just, just still in awe of our future Eagle Scout here, and it's just, I mean, this is, he also is not shy about public speaking, too, he lasted a long time, more than I could last up there, so congratulations, just all in awe, and I hope you can inspire some other kids to do, to follow that steps. Thank you.
Trustee Lawler?
First of all, I want to say thank you to the staff of Orland Park and everybody's help in helping St. Michael's School pull off their Fall Fest last week. It was very well attended, there were absolutely zero incidents, and I think a great time was had by all, and I know a lot of the young kids there were really happy to see it back. I also want to thank staff for the pumpkin picnic that they put on this weekend, that was fantastic, I thought it was really cool, and again, great community event, saw a lot of happy faces and a lot of happy people, so keep up the good work.
Okay, we'll just work this side, Trustee Lawrence?
I guess I'll jump on our Eagle Scout, our 2B Eagle Scout. I love scouting, I love it when young people are involved, I was in girl scouting myself, had a sash with a million badges like you, actually, you definitely have more than I had. A lot of fun, I learned a lot, absolutely, you have learned a lot, too. Thank you for doing this project.
Trustee Katsinas?
All right, I'm on the bandwagon here, the Sullivan bandwagon. No, I wanted to thank you, Jimmy, of course, but also your father, your grandparents and your aunts. I'm sure they played a big part of it, I know your biggest cheerleader was your Aunt Tracy, I can say that, personal experience. I'd like to say thank you to the staff of Public Works and REX for the amazing pumpkin party. I had three little ones there who had a blast, and also got to meet Ray's little ones, found out our grandkids have the same name, so it was a beautiful event, and it was a beautiful day, and I thank you to all the vendors, too. The vendors play a huge part in coming out and making the event so successful, so keep up the great job, thanks again.
Trustee Malani?
You know, first off, welcome our new interns for our internship program, you know, looking forward to see, you know, what they produce and how fast they learn and share with us, so looking forward to that, and again, Jimmy, you know, keep telling your story, I think, you know, inspire others to do the same types of things because we need more people doing things like you, so, thank you.
Trustee Leafblad?
All right, so, Jimmy, awesome, excellent work, and you know what, you may not have, you know, you look at a project like that and you don't always know, like, what it's gonna take, and then one inch poison ivy comes along, you know, so excellent job, and good job researching and learning what needed to be done. I also, you know, as always, want to thank the staff because you always, you know, you put things together in a manner that allows everybody to understand what we need, you know, what we have before us and what work still needs to be done. The Great Pumpkin Party was one of the favorites in our house when my daughters were growing up, so I have lovely memories and I will always love the Great Pumpkin Party. I want to share that I spoke to a resident recently who has been attending the Citizens Academy and is so excited by it, loves it, has learned so much, finds it to be a wonderful way to participate in learning about the village and being part of village business, so thank you also for taking the time to put together those presentations and for, you know, being, being here for this, for the Citizens Academy.
I think most of it's been said, but I'll repeat it, which is, it's a really big deal, what you did, and sticking to it, and I appreciate in particular the perseverance to kind of get through the bureaucracy, and I appreciate staff and the full board being flexible to help you bring about, bring about, excuse me, a great public good, so that's, it's, there's a lot of good things in here that you and your, your family probably already appreciates it, you will grow to appreciate it as you go successfully through, through life, so really, really proud of you and looking forward to hearing, hearing more. And, you know, it's like, okay, we have a cemetery, really? You know, you know Colonial Chapel, been there unfortunately for, you know, friends and, over the years, but didn't, never really planted the seed, never really registered on that cemetery, so, and the fact that it's related to a couple of our early, early elected officials, just kind of a nice, nice tie-in, so again, thanks, and, you know, as John said, if people mentioned St. Mike's, and the other thing, and on the pumpkin thing, Ray, it just, and this is really more for the police, from my personal experience, the fire department, the fire district, excuse me, had better candy. So, we had about equidistant lines at both the fire vehicle and a police vehicle, but it's like, I, Dina was with me, we were walking around, kind of rummaging through as much candy as we could find, so let's, let's, let's work on that. Tell, we'll tell the chief, it's like, dude, you gotta upgrade the candy. But it went, yeah, it went pretty well, but no, appreciate that, and we've, we're making a lot of big, big progress tonight, so I was very proud of all the things that were getting done. And just broadly, as we head into that budget cycle, we've used the word intentionality about how we're gonna finish Orland Park in terms of some of what we're gonna be doing for planning and zoning, that's a, that's a big deal, and as we go forward with this budget, how best to serve the people of Orland Park in ways that they want to be served. That's always the fine art of what the seven of us are trying to do up here, along with staff's help, so that's the goal, and I'm looking forward to this budget cycle, not that I want to see more endless spreadsheets, but it's an important policy statement of what we choose to do as a community, and all these pieces are interconnected, and I very much appreciate the, all the hard work that the staff's doing, and we'll look forward to some longish meetings on the budget with some hard questions for you, Chris, they're coming. But with that, I want to thank the board, and I think we're ready for an executive session, correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad?
I move to go into executive session to discuss minutes of closed meetings, collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. That was A and B, C, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the village, and D, pending litigation against, affecting or on behalf of the village or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second?
There's a motion in a second, call and roll, please.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?